And a second from Council Maccan. All in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Both piers? Moving on to our action items, number one, which is going to be pages eleven through fourteen. Our presenter for the evening is Steve Popper for the Dayton Fire District Volunteer Firefighters Barbecue Donation Request. Present. Okay. So, kind of diving into it, Jeremy, do you want to take over at this point in time?
We received a request from the Dayton Fire District for their barbecue events. That request is your package. We also have a list of community giving donations. This shows current amount spent in the current ballots and going to show that that balance would be if either of these community giving requests were to be approved tonight.
Excellent. Any comments? Any questions?
I'd like to recommend approval. Now, as requested, the this is the, I think, our, the Long Lake Fire for two thousand dollars. Move to approve.
It was two thousand dollars, correct?
Uh huh.
Good. Okay, so a motion to approve for two thousand dollars, Council Maccan?
Yes.
Second. Second. So we have a motion from Council Maccan and then a second from Council Wire to approve the donation request of two thousand dollars for the fire district's volunteer firefighter barbecue donation request. All in favor? All right. Any votes? Motion piers? On to the next action item two, Dayton FFA Easter egg hunt donation request. Presenters are Mitch Coleman and you're right.
Karen.
Karen, sorry.
Hi, everybody. Like you said, I'm Karen Navari. I'm the president of the Dayton FFA chapter here today. And we're here to talk to you a little bit about the Easter egg hunt. If you guys have been here and seen it in years past, how we've done it is you guys give us a donation and then we go out to the legwork and host the Easter egg hunt in the city park. Every year I have had the pleasure of being the Easter bunny. And playing that role kind of gives you a special insight of what it looks like. You know, you walk around before while everybody's lining up and their kids are super excited. And it's really just a special day and a special moment. Just watching their faces light up. And as you guys know, we live in a low income community and it's not always possible for parents in our community to give these students and these kids that kind of fun Easter egg hunt every year. And so by doing it in our community, by kids being able to do it with their friends from school and all the parents watching and the Easter bunny running around, it's a, it's a really fun experience. So that's why we're here today.
Real quick interjection, Jeremy, do we need addresses as well for the presenters? Or is that only for public comments in the chair? Just, just for public comment. Okay, we'll just want to make sure we're my look.
Yeah, Mitch Coleman and I've been doing this a long time, you know, thirty five years. And if you've seen, I've retired from the classroom. I don't teach in the classroom, but I still get to do FFA and I still get to take kids to the county fair. So I get to do the fun stuff of what this is all about. And I, I chuckle a little bit because of YouTube, because just when I was coming down, I, I had to find my password for my Google account. Like, I don't remember what that's at. And then I went to print the thing, you know, then of course we were out of toner and it's just like, this obviously was not meant to print out. Claire Coleman is my daughter-in-law. She's taking over as in my spot as the ag teacher. And so she wrote the application and I haven't even seen it. And so I'm here tonight because I've been here before, but we, we take care of the eggs. We take care of all the prizes. We do all that stuff. And so we're just asking for a donation. Do you have any questions? We can answer.
I'd like to add something. You're doing a lot for the kids, but I'm seeing so much of what you're doing for the ones who were growing up and doing this.
Yeah.
Always been fun watching kids grow up.
Yeah, it's, it's really fun because like I remember being in the, like doing the Easter egg hunt as a little kid. I remember like having that experience and it was really something special. So now being older, being in high school and serving the kids of the community is like a whole full circle moment. That's really fun for us to have.
Yep.
Well, I would like to move to approve the donation request. They go around. They want in thousand?
I don't know what we asked for.
Yes. I'd like to second.
Second. A motion from Council Maccan and a second from Council Peterson. All in favor? All right. Any votes? Both piers?
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Seven good days.
You too. All righty, moving on to action item number three, Child Abuse Awareness Month Proclamation. Presenter is Coleman Crocker from Juliette House.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for providing me a little bit of time to talk about this important issue. My name is Coleman. I am a youth prevention educator with Juliette's House. We're the local child advocacy center and child abuse intervention center. So to give you a quick overview of what that means, we have a couple of programs. Starting with clinical services, we have a very uniquely qualified team of clinicians who are in family support service staff members who are there to support children and non-offending family members. Through a very difficult time after abuse has been disclosed and reported, we want to make sure that we have a space where they can come in and appropriately resist re-traumatization. It's obviously a traumatizing experience for any child to experience abuse, but it can be equally re-traumatizing to have to retell their story to multiple people. So we want to make sure these things are documented appropriately and in as comforting of a way as possible. So that is a very uniquely qualified and amazing team in clinical services. We also offer trauma recovery services, the therapeutic branch of what Juliette's House does. Meeting any child, teenager or adult who has experienced these things, where they're at. Making sure that regardless of their ability to pay for them, they have access to therapy, a lot of different modalities of therapy to work towards that their personal path to recovery. So those are both extremely important topics. But the other part of it is that April is nationally recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so we have our prevention education team. That's the part of the team that I'm a part of. Where we have age appropriate curriculum to talk to anyone starting at pre-K all the way through adult audiences about things that we can all do to recognize and appropriately report child abuse, to prevent it before it happens. Because child abuse is a lot of things, is very sad and it's horrifying and it's detrimental to individuals, children, their families and communities. It is a crime. It is a stigmatized topic. It just doesn't get a lot of top, a lot of conversation. We understand. We're very grateful for April to have this time to talk about it, but we hope it's recognized that it's a year-round effort to continue to try to improve prevention efforts. So it's, it is a lot of things, but the other thing that we just don't hear people agreeing with us as much is it is preventable. And there's no case of child abuse that ever had to have happened. And there's things that everyone can do, whether it's as an individual to get educated on this topic and understand, you know, how to maybe cope or work towards their, their personal growth. If it's within their relationships to communicate with their peers and hold everyone accountable, it's to talk to their kids directly about safety topics more often. We understand it's not everyone's favorite topic to talk about, not saying that this should be every night dinner conversation, but it is important to hold space for it and talk about it on a regular basis enough to where, you know, unfortunately, if anything did happen, children, families, organizations and communities know how to respond appropriately. So we really appreciate you dedicating April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month and recognizing that. Because we all have a role to play in creating these safe communities that we, we all stand for. Everyone wants to say that their communities are, are safe and kids are thriving. But we also know that especially in a lot of the rural small communities that we live in, we still hear the response that, well, you know, we're a tight-knit group here. Those things just don't really happen. Unfortunately, that just kind of continues to stigmatize the topic and kind of shuts down conversation. And really, it's just important to, to be able to talk about it because we all can, you know, work within those relationships to improve and make sure that our, our kids are really thriving in each of these communities. So to talk a little bit about each of the curriculums that we offer at a pre-K level, we're working with a lot of the Yen Hill Head Start programs. You know, we show up with our puppet and ukulele just to talk about basic concepts of, you know, safe touch versus unsafe touches and how to say no and how to use your most powerful tool, which is your voice. And then at a K through five level, we're starting to understand the difference between abuse to your body abuses versus abuse with words. And to teach kids some safety rules, how to spot certain red flags, make moves away from them, identify safe adults and how to talk to them. And most importantly, recognize that if anything were to happen, it's never a child's fault. They don't deserve the guilt and the blame that comes with that. It's never their fault. So we want to make sure they understand that. Then at middle and high schools, we're there talking to kids about basic understanding of consent and what healthy relationships of all kinds look like. And then as adults, it's really important to recognize that we can talk to our kids at any of those ages about this, you know? Usually we're not bringing in the ukulele and puppet. I'm happy to make the special request. We can totally make that happen and bring those in. But typically we just want to get the conversation started and we want that to happen as casually as or as formally as any group would like. So we just want it known that, you know, if there is a, a group that just wants to sit down over coffee and talk about these things, that to us is, is progress in getting the, the conversation started. But all of these services, whether it's prevention education services, trauma recovery or clinical are all offered free to the community. We just want to make sure we meet people where they're at and communities where they're at to improve because the honest truth is we would love for you to help me, put me and the rest of the Juliette's House team out of a job. We'd love for there not to be enough work to be done, but right now there is very much work to be done. We see hundreds of, of kids each year. Luckily, we're also interacting with thousands of kids each year in the schools communicating these, these safety messages to them. But it goes a long way just recognizing it and getting the conversation started. So I really appreciate you all reading this proclamation, dedicating this month to, to that awareness and that prevention. Because we all do have a role to play. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, any questions I can answer.
I want to thank you for your hard work. It's tough work. We depend on you. So thank you.
Appreciate it. I will make sure the rest of the team knows. And a thing I didn't mention, we do April, not only is the awareness month, but we do have a couple of events. We really want to fill the Juliette's House Conference Room just in McMinnville. On April sixteenth at five thirty, there's just an open free training to all typically adult audiences just about how to recognize and report appropriately, how to understand the, you know, the prevalent abuse and also things that we can all be doing to prevent it before it happens. And on top of that, there is our biggest fundraiser of the year, the Celebrate the Children Auction and Dinner Event. That is at Abbey Road Farms on April twenty fifth, and there are still seats available. We really depend on, on that fundraiser to continue to do the great work that all of these departments do.
Couple things. Hey, could you send those dates to the, to the city and then make it forward to us?
Absolutely can do. I also have a couple of flyers and I'm happy to bring a poster if anywhere in town would like to hang up a poster.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You also might know the, the pinwheels are the typical sign for April's National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Don't have a ton on me right now, but if anyone would like me to bring some, put them outside here or City Hall, I'm happy to do that. Yard signs, just let me know if you're interested.
Thank you. And then I also want to comment to the second one, Council Peterson said, you know, my wife and I, so we got ten month old at home and that ten months has changed everything, right? And just your perspective on everything and it, it takes a lot of those theoretical conversations to be very real, very visceral. And you deal with that every day. And so, you know, you are, you know, trailblazing and performing such a great service for this community that, you know, I just wanted to echo that, that gratitude. And, you know, just thank you because, you know, it's, it's doing the good work for sure.
I appreciate it. And again, especially trauma recovery and clinical services, I can't, I couldn't do what they do over there too. We're happy to be on the preventative side of things, but they do really incredible stuff. So thanks for recognizing.
Yeah, I got to know Francine Viora years, years ago. Did she get to retire finally?
I know the name, but I have not met her. So I'm assuming that means she is well on that path to, to retirement. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I worked for Court of Terror. We threw a fundraiser for you guys at our concert last year.
Wonderful.
And it was amazing watching people just basically trying to throw money at us to, to give it for Juliette's House. So it was really kind of fun. So then our donors of the winery matched it dollar for dollar. That was really cool. So.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. It's an important thing to do.
Yeah, and I know right now abusing time for a lot of people, money is tight, but we are really dependent on those donations and we know that they have fallen off in these last few months. We're really hoping that that bounces back, but every little bit helps. And the other way is even if you can't financially give, just attending any of our trainings, they are free to attend, but that helps us with grant numbers to say, here's how many adults we reached out to. So just having those numbers of people who have actually experienced our presentations and trainings, that helps us out in the long run.
I believe as elected, it's where mandatory reports.
So yeah, absolutely.
Good to get through the training if we, if we can.
I was gonna say, if anyone wants a refresher, we'd happily set that up. We can make it shorter.
You did come to us a couple of years ago. Would be good to have a refresher because I believe we have something else going on on the sixteenth. So that's our water town hall. We won't be able to go.
No worries, but tell, you know, tell your friends and we'd be happy to have anyone. We also think I didn't mention, just in this new world, as things change and get more complicated, especially on the digital side of things, we do offer digital safety presentations for both kids, teens and adults. So that's an ever-changing side of the, you know, safety conversation that we're trying to have. So that's another thing that we could happily bring to the, to the council. Cool. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All in your team motion. Council Board. I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty four slash twenty five dash twelve to claim in the month of April twenty twenty five, Child Abuse Awareness Month. One second. I have a motion from Council Wire and a second from Council Typro. All in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Motion passes. All right. So action item number four, Yen Hill Rivers Presentation and Possible Approval of Collaborative Agreement Presenter is Augusta?
Yes.
Stop.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, nice to meet you all. My name is Augusta Stockman. I work with the Willamette Valley Visitors Association on their destination development team. I'm also a rare America member in my second year in that position. And since the beginning of my time with Wawa, I've had the privilege to work on the Yen Hill Rivers Access Project, working closely with Dave. And yeah, I'm here today to tell you some updates, the work we've been doing and also where we're kind of headed in the next few months and kind of a year out. Yeah, so for some project context, as I'm sure many of you are aware, we are talking about the Yen Hill Rivers plural, and that refers to the north, the south, the main stem, Yen Hill Rivers, as well as Mill Creek and Willamette Creek. So a pretty large scope, geographic scope. And the reason this kind of got started is because we were hearing a lot of community sentiment at all levels, city, state, regional, expressing that there was more access desire, more easy access to the rivers desired. Because there are historical access points and existing points like Dayton Landing, but also because we're looking at a pretty broad territory. There's some gaps and some, some desire for a more continuous and comprehensive river access experience. And so really what we're aiming to do with this project is improve clean, safe river access. First and foremost, recognizing that that will require some collaboration, which is part of why I'm here today to talk to you about. Across, there are so many jurisdictions involved that we are really looking to create a cohesive access experience. So it's not just, you know, one put in over here, one take out thirty miles down the line. I'm thinking about how to best cater to each community's needs and desired amenities and current conditions. And apologies for the tiny text on this, but in that quote there is citing some research that just talks about the economic impact of river access. So there's a stat that for every dollar that we've spent on river access that can generate multiple dollars in local economic impact. And so certainly like myself from the tourism side, we're looking at that and using that to kind of make the case for why this is a compelling project. So this map here is just a general snapshot of the geographic scope, so map of the river system that we're looking at. And then the next map pinpoints on that same area of the recommended access site. So in a moment, I'll talk more about the process up until now, but these points were all identified through a steering committee that Dave was a part of, as well as some community engagement sessions. And so for Dayton, that's Dayton Landing. But you can see pretty evenly distributed. That was the goal to try and have as many access points as evenly distributed as possible. These are not set in stone. These are evolving and, you know, are certainly up for discussion and further engagement. But that's kind of what we're looking at as of right now. And so to give you a better sense of timeline, what we've been doing, this all started kind of in earnest in fall of twenty twenty three. So we convened an initial stakeholder meeting with a pretty broad array of partners and stakeholders, and the purpose of that meeting was really to assess, is there enough interest and excitement about this project, knowing that the development timeline will be pretty extended and will require kind of sustained interest? Is there enough interest to carry that process forward? And we received a pretty resounding yes, which is exciting. And so we went ahead and convened a formal steering committee. And that included all sorts of city officials, representation from the county, Travis Peas, as well as Parks and Rec representatives from various jurisdictions. And the tourism entities were kind of the ones who brought folks to the table. We worked with the Oregon State Marine Board to get some funding. We hired a contractor to kind of neutrally facilitate all of us. And then in April, we, twenty twenty four, we hosted some preliminary community engagement sessions. One of them was here in Dayton, as well as Sheridan in McMinnville. So we put some big maps up on the wall, gave folks sticky notes, said, we want to hear, like, nothing is set in stone. We're not coming to you with any, you know, pre-formed plans. We really want to hear, how are you engaging with the rivers currently? What do you want to see? And so that helped inform kind of those recommended access sites that got put on the map. And then in June, the contractor we were working with compiled all that feedback from the monthly steering committee meetings, the community feedback into a strategic report. And around that same time, we were working to apply at the Marine Board's suggestion to this very neat program called the Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program, which is offered through the National Park Service. It's a technical assistance grant. And so with the city of Sheridan, as the lead applicant, we applied for and received that, which afforded us a year of this great technical assistance with two members of the National Park Service team. And so we're continuing to work with them and they're kind of guiding that continued strategic process from the report that we had last June. And so looking forward kind of the immediate action item that we're asking for your support and approval on today is this collaborative agreement that was suggested by several jurisdictions, looking ahead towards applying for grants and kind of moving this process into implementation once we finish up this planning phase. Having an agreement like this that has been, it's not binding, you're not committing to do anything besides share these goals and coordinate across the jurisdictions towards this kind of shared vision of improved access. And so a document like that, that's signed by all these cities, I think would be really, really compelling when you go towards applying a grant for a grant or, you know, just implementing those plans further down the line. And so that's first step, but also this spring, we're doing some direct landowner outreach, which is a group we have not been able to connect with as much as we need to. And so we're looking at doing a mailer that will go out directly to folks using publicly available tax lot mailing information. So inviting those folks to share any concerns, feedback, knowing that the Yen Hill Rivers are pretty agricultural. There's a lot of farmland surrounding them. We've heard some concerns expressed about irrigation equipment and that sort of thing. So we want to be sure we do our due diligence and hear those concerns and understand how we might shift plans or take those into consideration. And then we've been approved for a second year of the technical assistance with the National Park Service team with the city of Willamette, leading the grant application this time, switching in for Sheridan. And so that will kind of take us through to the end of the twenty twenty five calendar year with our final deliverable, which will be kind of this concept level plan tailored to each jurisdiction, recognizing current conditions, desired amenities. And so then at the end of this process, our goal is to really be able to give to each jurisdiction, you know, the materials that will prepare you to then go forward and implement, apply for construction funding, whatever you need to do for your specific access site. That's kind of the purpose of this coalition to get you to that point. And then we kind of step back and let, you know, you do what feels best for, for the city. Yeah, I think that's it. Questions?
So just to put a clarification on a couple of different things. So just because it was used as an example, we do, we do not currently own Dayton Landing, but as a county park, county park property. And so any agreement to this is in spirit alone.
Yes.
At least at, at this moment in time. And so, you know, I just wanted to be clear, just because I would use as an example that it's access point within our boundary, but not, not owned. So, you know, just for the purpose of clarification, also really appreciate the, the non, the non-binding component of this. From what I'm gathering, it's, it's basically the, you know, if you sign your name, you're expressing interest. It helps us with the collective bargaining and, you know, the conversations and so on and so forth. But there's not any requirement that is placed upon you at this juncture.
Right. That's exactly it.
Perfect. Cool. Any other comments or questions?
All right. Are there any concerns with the second year grant under issues that we've been having coming out of DC lately?
It's a great question. The answer is surprisingly, no. They encouraged us to reapply and the, the two team members we've been working with have had some restrictions in place, like they couldn't come, they're not allowed to come to public meetings anymore, which was a change, but they're, have expressed no reservations about, yeah, the future of the program or the ability to support in a second year. So I think they may be paring down the program, but it will be new applicants that are affected and they're prioritizing the second year applicants who are continuing the support. And so we feel pretty good about that continuation.
Any comments, questions?
May I move to authorize the city of Dayton sign on to the collaborative agreement as outlined by the Yen Hill Rivers Access Project?
We have a motion from Council Peterson. We have a second from Council Wire. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Action item number five, Municipal Court Judge Larry J. Blake Contract Review.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Good evening, everybody. Just like to confirm that since we got the Zoom meeting up and running, it has been live streaming on YouTube this entire time. So everything has been working fine. Lovely. For this particular agenda item, our contract with the municipal judge states that council is to review the contracts annually. If you don't want to cancel it, it automatically rolls over for another two-year term. If you do want to cancel it, that's the only action that you need to make tonight. He's not requesting any changes to the contract, any changes to his rates, the diaper. My recommendation, the municipal judge serves at your pleasure. My recommendation is to continue with him as our municipal judge, in other words, to take, for you to take no action tonight. And go allow it to continue to roll over.
I've seen, I've seen the judge in action due to some challenges we have with the neighbor and he's very good at what he does, very fair. Does a very good job and I would recommend we allow it to roll over.
There would not be a motion. I guess the motion would be a vote to terminate. So if there is, so I would entertain a motion for that. And if there is no motion, then we continue. Lovely. So it rolls over. Go on, let's go in place. Go on. Action item number six, appoint budget committee to the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee. How many, quite very high. Regardless. Jeremy?
Page forty three. I think there's the issue statement on the staff report is a veteran. Introduction to this item. Lovely. This is the first year that we'll have a budget for our newly established urban renewal agency. With that in mind, we need to appoint budget committee members to the urban renewal agency because when we hold budget committee meetings and made, you'll adjourn as a city and then you'll go into it as the board for the urban renewal agency. We are recommending appointing city budget committee members to the urban renewal agency. We inform them that we're going to put their names out there for your consideration. We are recommending that their terms coincide with the city budget committee. Avoid confusion and ensure consistency and ensure that the terms are staggered as required. The names are on your agenda sheet.
Put a clarification. So these four individuals have, they understand what is being asked and they have approved their names being put forward.
They've been informed and there haven't, to my knowledge, been any objections to that. Lovely.
Council Board.
So questions? Should, should not we be meeting as the Urban Renewal Agency? Should not we be meeting as the Urban Renewal Agency and have the Urban Renewal Agency appoint budget committee members or? I just don't know. I don't remember how the Urban Renewal Agency, it's under its own, um, we haven't met yet. I'm the chair. But I don't know if it's, shouldn't the agency, the, the board, the board of the agency be appointing the budget committee members versus the city? Even though we're the same people, but should be being done in the auspices of the actual Urban Renewal Agency meeting and saying. We're appointing these board members, just like we're meeting as a city council and appoint the budget committee for the city. I'm just, I'm just curious.
You know, that's a question I hadn't considered.
Maybe postpone this one until the next session?
Well, it's just, I mean, I have, I definitely go back and look at the. The, what, 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 probably articles of incorporation or whatever, you know, when we formed the agency, I just don't remember what. Um, I didn't have a chance to look into it before the meeting. I apologize. I didn't need to.
Sure. Do we have this, do we have a second meeting this month? We push it to the May fifth one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we could, we could, uh, do some more research and come back with you on the proper. Just to verify the correct procedure.
So then action item number five, or sorry, number six is being pushed to the May fifth. Uh, regular session being.
Dave, did you, in your study of Urban Renewal Agency budget, did you come upon an answer with this?
No, the only understanding I have is that the actually council is the board. They are an advisory committee underneath that. So it seemed to me the board is the one that would have to make the decision, not the advisory council. I mean, when we make it with McMinnville, Urban Renewal District, we made recommendations to the council. Because the council is the actual board.
Okay.
And the board then makes the decisions, which was council.
Okay, I just didn't know if we needed to be, to convene as the board, right? Versus a city council, because the city council appoints its budget members. I didn't know if the board should properly appoint its budget members.
I'm, I'm with you.
Okay. Just trying to thought some ice and bought some teeth.
Well, let me do some research and get back to you on that. I need the official motion to move the, to move it to the May fifth agenda.
Uh, you, you can approve a motion to postpone it.
Yeah, I, I moved to, um, move the agenda item to appoint a URA budget committee to the May. Fifth meeting.
We're going to motion for Council of Wire, a second from Council Tyke, to move, uh, action item number six. He put in a budget committee member for the Urban Renewal Agency, uh, to the May fifth twenty twenty five regular session. Moving on to action number seven, um, council rules proposed update, uh, page forty five to fifty. Jeremy, alternative view?
Thank you. At your March seventeen work session. You directed staff to make two changes to your current rules. The first change was to section. Three point eight related to attendance. Section was, second was to subsection B of section ten point one. In your packet, I have the proposed changes. I have the current language. Under the current language for three point eight, that's just two sentences. Under proposed changes, I rewrote section three point eight to address what I heard from the council at the work session. So we have the notice procedures for absences. We have the emergency notification procedure for absences. We have the statement that the presiding officer is responsible for making those determinations. Also added a sentence. About patterns of absences. I thought that would be useful to you to have that flexibility in case somebody is repeatedly calling out. And then notification procedures. Under section. Ten. B, the concern there was the language under, uh, what's currently on the books. Of not attempting to influence, where it says not attempting to influence. So I rewrote that. And what's highlighted in yellow is my rewrite of that. I also took the liberty of rewrite, completely rewriting section ten. If you want a more narrow update, then you may consider just what's highlighted. If you think a broader update to that section is necessary, then you may consider. The entire section ten or something similar. Tonight, I'm looking for direction from you so that I can. Finalize a draft from your rules and bring that to you for final approval.
Proposed changes, I think it's, I think it's done very well in full for section ten?
Yeah.
You have a question to follow?
You're a good listener, Jeremy.
Yes.
And you're good at putting it in words. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it a motion or?
If there's a consensus to proceed as presented, that's enough for me.
That's as main?
Yeah, yes.
Yep, perfect. Okay, moving on. Uh, action number eight, Parks Master Plan Stakeholder List Approval, page fifty one, fifty two, Jeremy. I'll turn it over to Mr. Repluse.
Okay, so as you well know, we secured a grant, LGDP, uh, grant. For our Parks and Recreation Master Plan and, uh, as we move through, um, the various stages. Of creating the master plan, they're now at a point where they would like to create and discuss with a stakeholder group. Either individually or as in group sessions, um, different aspects of the feedback they've received, uh, to date through the survey that went out to the community. Uh, we reached out to a lot of different people, um, we were very fortunate in many ways to get most of them to say yes. And so they requested as many as twelve names. We have twelve names on here. Uh, we tried to touch on different aspects, uh. As you can see, Sherry Walsh for the Nature Trail Proponent and Savannah Shipp is, uh, sponsors as well. Um, we have Chris from the council and representing the events committee, Chris Tyke, our counselor. As well as our mayor, who's always been an advocate for Smith Park. I reached out to our planning commission and, uh, in particular, Kaitlyn, uh, Ben, uh, Ben. Genderson, or Gendron, um, and she suggested that I put on her, her husband, um. Is a good background, working for Montana State Parks and, uh, and Recreation and, uh, brings a lot to the table that way in knowledge. Uh, we needed a DCDA representative, Wendy Steg. But Dave Mackden on there, not only is he with the planning commission. But he obviously knows his stuff about ADA and he is a big dog park advocate as well. Um, Judy Gerard from the historical committee, myself, and then from the school district. Maria Alcaraz and Frank Baumholtz. So those were the people we had chosen. What happens next is after these interviews are done and so forth. There will be a community open house held, uh, where we will try to. Work to get as many people as possible to get the input on what has come about through the survey and what the stakeholders said. So that's kind of where we're headed with all this. So this is basically to get your, uh, approval of that listed here.
Dave, is the twelfth a, uh, mandatory max or a recommendation?
Twelve was the number he said that. He said ten to twelve, so that's what it was.
Okay.
We haven't reached out to any of these people beyond just asking if they, that we haven't confirmed anything yet, that we hear from you.
Um, for the council, I would like to be put on as an alternate, um, if that's okay, counsel.
Yeah, I would have liked to have had something to say about this, but no.
No, no, go join up as an alternate.
I would like to have something to say about wheelchair access in the park.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so yes, I would like to be considered as an alternate. My husband doesn't know as much about the ADA as people assume.
We've got two alternates, uh, Dr. Mack and myself, proposed additions to the, uh, stakeholder list. Um, do we also want to get, uh, there was another that you had mentioned. Dave, as a proposed addition.
Yourself and Mack, that's the only two, I believe.
Just for the record, it's Cheryl Walsh, not Sherry. She was my next door neighbor.
Okay.
So. At the very top, the personal host. Her email is correct. It says Cheryl, but the name says Sherry. She's probably cringe if anybody ever, oh, sure. And then, Dave, just for the record, I would like for Council Mack to be the priority alternate and I'll be the secondary alternate. Got it?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, any other questions or comments or concerns? If not, I will.
I look to approve the roster of stakeholders in the A for participation in Parks and Rec Master Plan.
With amendments as many?
As amended with the others.
Also, we have a motion from Council Peterson and a second from Council of Wire to approve as amended. Uh, all in favor? Uh, all right, on to action item number nine, small cities allotment grant submission proposal, uh, Jeremy and Dave.
So, um, we are again looking to put forward a grant and submit a grant before end of month for the small city allotment program. We did not get the grant, um, this last go around. Uh, one of the things they've done is changed the dates. So now. Instead of waiting a full year, they're coming back out in six, after six months and providing us with the same program. So we're coming forward with basically the same request we made before. We, we did update pictures and things to that. To illustrate even how it's deteriorated even more in six months. And, uh, we'd like to just get your blessing to make sure that we put it forward. The grant is written and ready.
I need to approve city staff to submit the small city allotment grant by April thirty, twenty twenty five. All right, I've got a motion from Council Wire and a second from Council Tyke, uh, to approve as recommended, um, all in favor? Any votes? And then action item number ten, uh, the water usage and leak detection discussion. This is being driven by Council of Wire. So I will go ahead and turn over Council of Wire at this section.
Uh, no, I just had some, uh, the city manager and I have discussed this briefly. I just had some questions. Um, about the leaks and that we were having and what. I wanted to understand how we track that, um, and. Looking at, you know, I know we found the leak, but looking at last year, I don't remember it ever coming up, and I don't remember if we ever got this type of report last year. To look at it. But looking at last year, the, um, the delta. It was really, really high for like the entire year. I just wanted to understand. You know, where that dealt, what, what that percentage of loss, how we measure that? Because I was thinking. I was thinking like, if you know how much is going out of the water treatment plant and how much were building for. You know, big losses would show up. I just don't know. I just, I just wanted a better understanding of, you know, why we're seeing like fifty, sixty percent. Loss last year for the entire calendar year and how we can maybe prevent that from happening again. I just didn't understand how we measure that.
Well, primarily, we do, uh, when we read meters, yeah, we get water reports from that. So it gives us if a meter is reading a loss, then we get that on the twentieth of every month when we read meters. Um, other than that, it's. Basically, like Jim said, if it's coming in. It's coming out of the ground, it's metered at all of our locations. So all of our wells have meters. The springs have meters, PRV has a meter. So basically, we're able to kind of track in between meters. But there are on main lines in between meters, if we have on our side, if there's. A, a leak, it's kind of difficult to pinpoint other than you might see. Where it comes out of the ground X amount and it comes into the next meter, you'll see a difference. So other than that, uh, some of that is. We've had issues like the low water level of the springs. When we had the well company come out and verify that that's what's going on at the springs with the low level. He also informed us that those meters with low flow going through them have air. That's why we're seeing like the bubbly water in town once in a while. So that air in that, when it's going through the meter with the water, will actually. Show that we're getting more water than we actually are, because the air is reading as water flowing through it. So that's where we started really trying to. Look at what, like, turning the wells down, throttling them back with valves, trying to. Get more of an accurate reading through those when we were seeing the issues from certain wells running low. Those wells are super difficult to pinpoint that with, because there's no, we have no telemetry at all out there. All we are aware is if it's on or if it's off. So we're working to get bids on that, trying to get it in time to where we can try and get it put in for our budget request. To try and get some telemetry out there so we can actually see what the water flow is, the levels in the well, to try and. Get a little bit more accurate information through some of those. Some of the other issues that we're seeing is, like I put in here, we've got. Infrastructure that's here in town that's not even twenty years old, that we are having to go in and replace entire service lines because of the corrosive soil. So it's. It's more frequent than you would think, the, the, where we're seeing issues pop up with leaks. On these lines due to the soil. Some of that is. After it leaves the treatment plant and we have already accounted for it leaving the treatment plant and then we. Send it through the system and it gets into these spots and. You don't see these huge losses, but you will see any portion of a loss. So it is kind of difficult to track some of these.
So I guess my question was, is on the report that we got, there's a column that says percent loss. And last year we had some, there was one month in March where we had a sixty percent loss.
Yeah.
And it's averaging above forty percent. I just don't remember anybody bringing it up and I'm just trying to understand. You know, I understand what's been happening this past July or this past January and everything, but I mean, a sixty percent loss is. Humongous. I'm just wondering. I, I guess I'm just wondering, I, I don't remember this being brought before council of like, you know, hey guys, we've got a huge problem here. I mean, we knew we had a even infrastructure, but sixty percent of the loss on water is like. You know, you're not firing a flare, you're, you should be firing a howitzer off.
Yeah.
Saying there is something seriously wrong here. So I'm just trying to understand. You know, from, from a council point of view, is there a better? Or are there other best practices that we can use to manage or measure this to help manage the problem?
We do annual leak detection, uh, a lot of it, quite honestly, comes from community, from people out and about. Seeing water. See something, say something, uh, instead of going to social media and not coming to the city. You know, that's.
Um, that thing I married in court recently, I think that started. From comments on Facebook about low water pressure.
Correct.
Um, I would recommend that we do more of a campaign, see something, say something. Because if people talk about low water pressure, I mean, that sounds like a good. You have a map where you can put pins and if pins start to gather, then you go take a look there. I mean, is there something like that?
I mean, they thought, when they finally complained to the city. They posted it on Facebook. The next day, they actually called the city after, I believe it was your comment to reach out.
Yeah.
They called, we went out. They called, we went out, confirmed that there was an issue. That was on a Friday. Monday morning, we had a crew out there and replaced the service line. And we took action.
We needed you more.
But the reason that when he made the comment about just been going on for a month. None of us were aware of it because he didn't say anything. He had told us while we were out there making the repair. He was under the impression that we had lowered pressure in the system as to do with the water curtailment that we were on. So he was, he thought that it was something that we had done.
Yeah.
And if he would have notified us the day that he noticed it, we could have gone out, verified it and taken action like we did.
I would like to suggest we do actively pursue that at our Water Town Hall meeting.
Absolutely. We can add that as a, as a general topic. See something, say something with who's sorry.
So do we think that most of these like really high numbers from last year were the big week? Out there? Is that why this year it's like dropped way down?
We had. Last year we had. The leak right up here on Palmer in two twenty one. That was another infrastructure line that was. All but sworn up and down that it had been decommissioned. Right. So when we actually located that line. As far as even. The city's engineer. Even he was under the impression that that had been decommissioned when the new service line was put in out there, the new main line. So there's a lot of old infrastructure that we are still finding that should not exist, that was supposed to be gone. And I know that that one was. An active leak for several months.
Well, I mean. Okay, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is like last year, every single month, there was at least thirty six percent or thirty four percent or more loss. Starting, starting in February this year, it stopped at five and then March was point three four. So do we think that big line out there is what caused all this?
So that, that big line that ran across fed the other leak as well. So now that that line is shut off. We're. Pretty certain that we don't have any more of that old three inch line on that end of town that's active.
Okay, yeah, that's always trying to, I was just trying to get some understanding about how we're measuring and. If there's ways to not have. Yeah, that happening then. Sixty percent loss, water loss in a month. I, I mean. I mean, I don't want to cross into operations, but I think something like this, if it gets above like forty percent or something, that's like even less than that. I think the council needs to be informed. So we at least know what's happening. Because that'll help also inform our decisions with when it comes to budgets and other kinds of things about where we need to try to focus the limited dollars that we constantly talk about. But. I mean, yeah, I mean, I was completely unaware that we were losing sixty percent of our water last March. That's just kind of like, kind of creepy. And I would request that the council be noted by one, something this drastic.
Would you propose a virtual?
I would honestly leave that. I mean, Jeremy, you mentioned a number earlier when we're. Talking about this. What's, I mean, water loss is going to happen. I, I know that. But what's, what do you think is an appropriate? You know, why don't, why don't you guys come back to us? Why don't you talk about it with staff and just come back to us and see? Because I don't want us to get over alarmed and like start. You know, twitching about every little problem we have. But I mean, you know, thirty five percent, forty five percent, sixty percent, I think is something that definitely should have been brought to council. I'm going to let the experts. I would ask that the experts come to us and say, this is what we think we should do. It's like if we start seeing loss at this level, we're going to come and tell you about it, just so at least you're aware. And then, you know, as a, as a council, we know how to drive policy.
Absolutely. I'd like to add, Mr. Council President, that. This is a very important. Topic as. The council responsible for ensuring effective operations of our city utilities, this is something to be informed about. So I'll, I'll work with the city team to see how best we could report this to you and ensure that you're kept in the loop.
Anything else on this topic at point time? Alright, moving on. So next up is council comments and concerns. We'll start over with it. Council Mac.
I heard that there is a Mexican branch. Can you know, coming into town? I saw the message today. That it looks like it's going into the Lone Star space that I've seen.
I just saw it yesterday.
Yeah, the sign on the door. Lots of Mexicans in here, what I know we like Mexican food. Is there any way, I didn't even know that the Blockhouse Cafe space was open and available. And it wasn't until the new people moved from there and they're coming in here. We had a lingerie shop. Where Sora is right now. The city didn't know anything about it. The council was, there's a lingerie shop. Is there any way we can get more rate? Do more promotion, maybe even on Facebook. Hey, we, we, we need to say goodbye to this business, but we have a new one coming in here. Seems like we're. We should know what's going on in town in our downtown area. Is food for thought, maybe some way of promoting our downtown a little bit more?
We haven't had much to promote for quite a while.
So we, you know, there's a lot going on all of a sudden. We need to start. Upping our game a little more. We used to have a dating chamber. And they were like the Chamber of Commerce, but then the DCDA took over. Or they went out, they. They went out of business, so to speak. And then the DCDA picked that up. But. I'm not saying a lot of downtown business promotion.
That should be the role of your downtown association. Certainly was my role in McMinnville is to promote that way. So. I would definitely have a conversation with the DCDA president and say that should be a role of theirs because certainly was when I was a downtown director.
That is a project.
Are you on that?
I am. That is a project that they are picking up. They do have Ukiah, the new president. You and I have sat down in length and talked about specifically that. So we are forming a plan and you should start seeing more of that.
I just would also like to see possibly the downtown association could. Kind of make a report quarterly or something so that we're in the loop. New businesses. Expanded businesses, defunct businesses, so we can support them in whatever way we can as soon as we can.
One of the things that I'm doing for the DCDA just is to. They, the Oregon Main Street requires a quarterly report.
Okay.
And it has that business open, business closed, number of employees on, off. So now, right now, my report was one business gone, that's it. Because you can't report it until they actually open and become active. So this next report should be pretty robust because we have a lot going on over the next few months. And I can make sure that you all get a copy of that report since I'm doing it for them and then you'll, you'll be up to speed completely then. As to what's new, what's changed, what the impact is, and even what the DCDA is doing in each of their pillars. So. Yeah. I'd be happy to get that to you.
Well, I'm going to think we need to do some more stuff. They did a couple of chocolate crawls. I will say though, I didn't see anybody crawling. I still don't understand. Anyway. I would like to have a chance to talk to the new president and talk about like the Sidon Sun wheelchair access to what happened last summer. Is there a chance?
Of course.
I, I know I don't speak for the city. So I want to make sure, you know, I'm following my role and rules and all of that. Can I work with you to make that happen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me know. I'm, I'm open, you know, my schedule is pretty open except for right now, we, oh goodness. Within the next month, I will have gone to the LOC conference and come back. I do have. Just in mind to talk about very specifically. One is I am going to be asking for, what do you guys do in your town for recreational opportunities for seniors and the disabled? I'm going to be talking about wheelchair evacuation and emergency programs. Asking if any of the small cities have. That in their plans. And if any of them do, I might see about getting a copy of their plan. So maybe we can start with it and customize it. But I am going to, I know I won't be speaking for the city. Per se. But I will be representing that this is something that is doing. And I'm kind of looking forward to going to another conference. Anyway. I also have been thinking about our water utility billing. And the fact that that twenty six dollar charge for the footbridge. Has wound up as part of our sewer cost. Now I've been talking with Jeremy. And he thinks that we could make that a separate line item on our utility bills. So that we have this as debt payment. And what you're charged for sewer is the actual cost of sewer treatment. I would like to see if we couldn't rearrange our utility billings because I think that would be more precise, more accurate. Give people more information to work with. Because the footbridge isn't exactly sewer cost. And the loan we're painting is primarily for the footbridge. That's the way I understand it, for the steel part of it. So. I, that's something I would like to ask about if we can change the billing, the way we bill. So. And I think that's a tricky night.
On that, so what if we added to the May fifth twenty twenty five agenda that as a discussion item is championed by Council Mac and similar to the water discussion today, championed by Council Wire. So maybe that becomes a topic of conversation at the May fifth regular session meeting.
Thank you, because I would like to add one more thing. I would like us to actually create a policy. That would eliminate the possibility of rate hikes being kicked down the road because I'm council and won't. I would like to. Charge the city with. You charge the people exactly what it's going to cost as close as possible. Exactly what our costs are. On a nonprofit basis. Cover our costs and maintenance and repairs. But if we. Insist that our city manager brings us the appropriate cost reviewed on every year or every two years. But that way we don't even risk. Not raising rates when we should. And we raise them a little bit as we go along and then you don't have any major changes to make. Could we talk about that at the same time we do the billings?
Let's dial this in a little bit. So, and what if you meet with Jeremy off? Off air, I guess. And then if there's a proposed conversation, we can get the word about that.
If Jeremy is cool with this, yes. Because when I joined the council, that was definitely the case, or at least that's what we heard. Oh, no, I mean, when I first started coming to council meetings at the early part of the century. I heard reports, well, the council won't let me raise the rate. And so when, when the rates finally went up, it was this much. Instead of this much. We had it under control for a while, the dollars here, a couple of dollars there. No big jumps. And that worked much better. So. Mr. City Manager, are you willing to talk about this? Although I wonder, should we clear it up until after May?
Well, Budget Committee, maybe this are. Yeah. Budget committee meetings are going to be here before you know it. I'm working on the budget right now. So if there is specific input on how we're going to structure our rates for the upcoming fiscal year, we need to have those conversations now.
Has it been a couple of years since we did a basic rate adjustment?
Well, I, I know we were talking about doing some of this based on. Last year about on different, you know, meters and that kind of thing and then looking at different options and we didn't want to do it. At the same time, we're going to have to add. Additional monies for the, for the debt. But I think it's a, this is a, this is a longer policy discussion because. It's not just exactly what it costs to treat our sewer. We have to have. A plan in place to, you know, be able to build funds up to be able to replace sewer line and stuff like that. So it's never, it's never going to be exactly what it costs us to just treat the sewage. So I think, I think we have to have a longer discussion. Tonight's not probably the place to do it. We can put it on the agenda for next May or for the next month and it would dive into it.
Well, I misspoke. Nonprofit accounting is. Covering your costs and a reasonable amount for maintenance, repairs and upgrades. So that would need to be a part of that. I do remember just before we approved that twenty six dollar increase. We had looked into changing how we charge sewer. Connecting it to actual water use. And that. Would have added something like forty dollars to the average water bill. Because right now. If you use this much water, you pay this much sewer. If you use this much water, you still pay that much sewer. Spreading it out based on water usage. Wouldn't have too many bills by a whole bunch. But I think. In time, we got the report that said Rochelle was charging exactly what the city needed. And that was based on maintenance, repairs and a little bit of upkeep. So we know it can be done because Rochelle did it.
So to dial this in just a little bit, so. We need to plug it. So I think what the city manager was saying, if I remember wrong, is. This type of conversation is one that we need to be have relatively, you know, in advance of the budget conversations because the budget conversations are going to be taking up the next X amount of time and it plays a pretty significant role in the budget conversation. So a conversation like this or like these, you know, kind of combined topics. Maybe what can be good is a presentation where we all collaborate on this a little bit later in the year. It's definitely not something that we can make a decision on. You know, this month, next month, it's probably something that we want to address on an annual basis. So maybe something towards the fall or towards the winter of this year, we had a good in-depth discussion about how we want to build this, but not try to pigeonhole it into the, you know, next meeting right before the budget conversations that are going to be taking up so much of our time. Is that a accurate representation of your thoughts of, of Jeremy?
Well, once we get a budget, we'll have all the numbers to work with.
Yeah, some of this could, conversation could, could occur in, in concert with the budget process. But to your point and the Council McGuire's point, we need to have a longer term capital improvements. In the meantime, if anybody has any specific input on the budget, please reach out to me. Happy to meet.
Okay, I'm good.
Just a couple of updates on the committees. DCDA, we started doing some research and development type stuff on farmers markets. We reached out to Samantha over at the. McMinnville Downtown Association. She gave us a ton of information. She gave us a copy of her handbook. She gave us a ton of information. She gave us a copy of her handbook. Couple sites to go after, some, some, some ideas for some grants. Some specific places to go get those grants from. So it was a great meeting at about an hour, and it was me, you, Kai, and Wendy. Great information. So we're working on that right now. The Friday nights are coming together. There is a pretty neat special feature that they're going to do this year, something different than they've done in the past for one of the Friday nights. All I'll say is it's a, they're, they're working on the title, but for what we have right now, it's Celebration of Dayton Voices. So from how they were explaining it, it sounds like it's going to be a blast. So, so that's that one. Cinco de Mayo. We've got the DJ confirmed. We've got, we weren't able to get a mariachi this time. We were finding that you almost need a reserve a year in advance. So. But we do have a Spanish fan that's coming, so I got him confirmed. I can't pronounce the name of it right now. And the food vendors are starting to fall into place on the way this week to confirm that. And I believe we talked last on the, the parade. And I think we've got about ten, ten floats right now. There's been some community outreach. The nature trail, one that I've talked about in the past, that's really starting to get some traction. We do have a member in the audience right now that's spiriting that with me. Savannah. We've had a lot of involvement. We've had Mitch Coleman out there. We've had a arborist from Lafayette come out. I've seen there was a gentleman, was it the gentleman that made those benches that are on the trail?
He did reach out. Jake Katsler, he reached out and told me he's willing to donate his expertise for the trail.
So there's a lot of influx of people, so that's, that's really starting to take shape. The schools hundred percent backing us on this. So and then the other one that kind of spurred from it was the community garden. That too has really started to take shape. I give Savannah props on that one again. We jumped on that and we've worked on that on that.
Saturday morning?
Yeah, Saturday morning. And they posted a bunch of pictures and stuff that, that's going pretty good. And Mitch Coleman, he's donating a bunch of dirt, a bunch of seed. There's a community member out here, Jeremy. He's donating his time and some equipment to scrape the ground. We also have some lumberyards that are donating material. And I think there's a little bit of material that we're going to have to look for funding sources, but other than that, it's really starting to take shape.
Where's the begrudge point for that?
We have not established that yet. It's already existing. We're, we're with it right now, but as we look to possibly expand it, we will be looking into that. Or are you talking about the trail or the? The trail, I, I don't know. It's just right now, it's the existing trail. We're just, we're just doing work on the existing trail.
Yeah, maybe it's coming in someone else's report, but we had talked about kind of an open house, like a day that footbridge, it sort of said last, April twenty second, is that? Thank you.
Well, several of us originally, the, we were told that the Senator or Senator or State Senator, Senator Stars, Chief of Staff wanted to meet with us, and it actually turned up that Senator actually showed up, which is actually pretty cool, because he's, it's the first time that I know, I think Council Mackin confirmed it, that we've had either an assembly person or a state senator, our state senator come to, to date to say hello. So that was really kind of cool. He is on the Senate Ways and Means Committee. And we talked to him about our Fisher Farms project that Representative Scharf got submitted into the Joint Ways and Means Committee as one of the projects. And so we talked about, to him about that and, you know, why we're doing it and why it's so important and how important it is for small cities like us to have some of those state funds because of our limited resources and our uber low property taxes. So he was very supportive of it. He said he will work to, you know, talk to his colleagues in the Senate and see if we can get that approved and get that money for us, which would be great. Because we are, we're only asking for sixty one percent funding from the state. We're already almost eight hundred grand into it with buying the property and everything. So that shows that we have skin in the game. So those types of projects are much more likely to be approved with the small pot of money, because we're not asking for everything for the state to fund everything. We're already showing that we've got, you know, almost a million dollars, you know, into this project already. So that's kind of cool. And I'm glad that he actually came. It wasn't just his chief of staff. That was actually kind of cool. And kind of dovetailing with that is as we got the, everybody got the email, I think, so the same night of our water open house, the Joint Ways and Means Committee for the, for the legislature, the state legislature is meeting. And I proposed to the city manager that it would be a better, I think it would be better for him to be here for that. Not only for people to meet our new city manager, for a bunch of people who haven't, but also to be able to, you know, people to get the, the information about the water containment, et cetera, directly, you know, from the horse's mouth, so to speak. And that sense I have in the past testified before state committees multiple times that I was willing to go ahead and take Jeremy's place. We're going to talk right after this meeting. Make sure I have the right talking points and just kind of make the cities ask before the, that Joint Ways and Means Committee. And that's very, very vital, because if a city is asking for something or a county is asking for something, and then nobody shows up, much less likely that they're going to sit there and say, wow, they really actually really want this money. So what I would like to do, what I do need is in accordance with our rules, I need the approval of the council to go and speak on behalf of us in front of this other elected body. So that's why I'm asking for tonight is the permission of the council to represent the city as, not just as a private citizen, but as a, as a city councillor and representing the city before the Joint Ways and Means Committee of the Boarding Legislature.
First of all, thank you very much for doing that. That's, that's an incredible, incredible offering, incredible resource.
Well, I just want to say, before I make a motion, I just want to say thank you, Council McGuire. You're so articulate. I, I learned, I mean, I really learned a lot sitting there with Senator Stark from you. And so I'm really, I sat there and I thought, who else should represent? Thank you. So I moved to the, to have the city council support. Council McGuire in speaking for us on April sixteenth to the down Joint Ways and Means Committee.
So I've got a motion from Council Pearson and a second from Council Mackin. All there?
Thank you, guys. Divide and conquer. I think it's going to be a good way to, to make our case before the legislature, and this will be huge. It's really exciting. And Senator Stark was very, very supportive. So, and he's on the Senate Ways and Means Committee, not only joining on, so he'll be working it from the Senate side. We already have Representative Scharf working on it on the, the Assembly side. So I'm really, I don't want to jinx it.
Would you be willing to, after the presentation? Because I don't think you can send it to us, because that would be a, but could you send a summary and how it went to the city manager to then disseminate to us?
Oh, yeah, it's going to be three, it's three minutes. Oh, you have three minutes. Like, it's just basically you sign up to testify, and you have to sign up online and tell them why you're there and who you are and what's going on. It's going to be like three minutes, but it's just, it's just having one of us show up to advocate for it is the, it's, I don't want to say it's checking the box, but it's kind of checking the box. It's like, you know, those guys, those electeds want to see that we're willing to step up to the plate and take the time and the energy to talk to them directly. That's what we'll do.
Anything else, Council McGuire?
Oh, no, sir.
So I've got a few things. I just wanted to confirm. So I had reported about a week and a half ago that the lock in the men's bathroom at the courthouse park was broken. So you don't have, you don't have privacy in, in that stall. I was just curious if that had been actioned at this point in time. If not, that's cool. I just want to put it on the official radar. Because anybody, whether it's, you know, anybody has to have a, a monitor, so to speak, if you go into the, because it's, you know, open for everybody to, to open up on you.
I think that was on a day you were out. My apologies. It has been repaired.
Cool, that's great.
Lovely. Thank you. I just wanted to follow up.
Love it. Okay, and then next up, there was a hidden concern at a prior meeting that I just want to follow up on, that the food parks in town have been approved, they've gone through the approval process? Yes. Excellent, cool. So that is legitimate, I should say, is, is a correct terminology for, I think, Council Mackin, it was either raised a concern. So I just wanted
There is a second one, Hengries now? Where? Okay.
And then, so the next thing is the facilities tour. Just as a heads up, I've got a piece of paper right here after the meeting. If anybody wants to attend a facilities tour, it's going to be on April ninth, so just a couple days at five thirty PM. We're meeting here. And then if you would like to attend that, please. And then next is actually in response to something that Council Taker mentioned. Something that, and I would like to pull the, the council on this, because it's kind of more of an official ask. It would be a month behind, granted, but it would be, I think, beneficial for us to have the minutes from the DCBA meetings and for the Events Committee meeting in our packets at the regular session meeting. So that way we can just read up. You know, it's one thing to hear about it, is, is one way of learning for sure. Another thing to read it, you know, it's a good way to drive home, okay, this is, you know, what's been going on. And we're going to be functioning a month behind, because the minutes will have to be approved. So, you know, your update is going to come in advance of, you know, the meetings, the, the minutes that we'll be seeing in the packet. But it would just be a good way, I think, for all of us to stay in touch of what's going on in the subsequent committees and with the DCBA. What are our thoughts? Yay, yay?
Shouldn't we have publishing, shouldn't we be publishing some of this anyway?
I think the, the committee ones would be on the website. But, you know, it is good, good for us to have our packets too, just for ease of access. Yes, to your point, you know, we can all definitely go on the website and look it up. But maybe I'm taking a lazy man's route, but just a, an idea that I had. Cool. And I don't think we need a motion for that, but thank you, Jeremy, for and then that is all I have. We are moving on to our informational reports. It is time for our, I'm at the main seat of the table, so I can say it, because I wanted to say it for so long. Time for our TED Talk.
Just a few items to go over tonight. The highway signage that we have been approved for. We've been approved. Now ODOT has to approve the specific location. They have, we have marked it for them, so they're to come out anytime now and just give us their blessing. And then at that point, the sign company will come out and install it, because that's all ready to go. Bandstand construction, if you've been by it in the last day, center or two. The painting is now been done, the superstructure up above, which is brand new. They will be resurfacing now the concrete on the bandstand area itself and then sealing it. And then they will then install the steel, stainless steel wire cabling around the bandstand, and obviously I'm painting the stairs as well. So we're getting very close. They are definitely promised this will be done before the end of the month, so it'll be ready for Cinco de Mayo. We got a grant from the Roundhouse Foundation. It's just a small one for twenty five hundred dollars, but it's going toward audio equipment for the bandstand. So what we're trying to do there is make a consistency to the sound at the bandstand, because like, depending upon who the band is, some have great equipment and some don't have very good equipment. So that should hopefully bring some consistency to sound for our Friday night concerts. Our urban renewal plan, our, we just got, yeah, late last week, a letter from the county to set our frozen tax base for the urban renewal area at eleven million eight hundred twenty eight thousand six hundred and two dollars. So we'll be able to use, that's going to be our base from here on out for the next twenty five years. So that's what we'll be working on in valuation as it increases with the new projects and so forth, which is great. It's nice to have that established now. I wanted to bring up to speed on the Twin Towers property usage going forward, primarily for the rest of this year. So the Opera House lot, okay, is going to be used for parking for the new twelve room hotel as valet parking temporarily, okay? So they'll be probably surrounding that with something that looks decent and then parking the cars there. And then they're utilizing, as you might notice behind us here, that's the schoolhouse lot. They put three containers on there. Those are R and H containers for the next project. They just felt like they needed to haul them all the way back to Portland and then bring them back here. So Doug Switzer's scene, that's being stored on that lot at the moment. And then the last thing, I just wanted to once again run by you and, and Council Pearson brought it up, the foot, the footbridge ribbon cutting ceremony. We had agreed would be on Earth Day, Tuesday, April the twenty second at five PM. Provided there's no objection to that, that's what we're going to go forward with. I have put out some feelers with some of the people that were obviously involved in creating the footbridge, one of them being our ex-city manager. Who has put that data aside, and so will also be reaching out to former councillors and such to get them involved as well as anybody on the Senate and or state legislature to picture take, so to speak. So as long as everyone's cool with that, I'm going to be working on that the rest of this week and getting it out to everyone and making reach outs so that we're all there.
State was mentioning that just confirming County's going to be invited as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so it's confirmed that is Tuesday the twenty second at five PM.
That is correct.
Excellent.
I was just going to say I have another appointment at six o'clock that night, so if we can do everything we can, go off at five, that would be great. That could be a Mac at six.
Yeah, no problem. And that is my report.
All right, I'll remember later. Next up is our public, public, public works informational report.
All right. Once again, back to the see something, say something. We are fighting huge vandalism, vandalism issues right now at both of the parks. Anderson Smith Park. We are on our third time now of putting windows back in that have been removed over the weekend. We do have some trail cams that have been installed to try and see if we can catch who's doing this. But we've gone as far as putting tamper proof bolts in, and they are removing tamper proof bolts. So yeah, I mean, they're taking the time to go and find a specialty tool to remove these bolts to take the window out. And the opening is only, it's less than a foot, so I don't believe anybody is climbing through it or climbing out of it. I, I don't know what the purpose is, but if you see something, please let us know. At the same location, we have found, I mean, this is a brand new location, that we have found, one of the two sinks was completely pulled off of the wall and just hanging by the plumbing. This last weekend, we went in Saturday, everything was great. Sunday morning, I get a text message from my own call guy. The changing table, the plastic changing table for changing a child was completely tore off and laying on the ground. So, and then Dave has helped me in the past. We've had multiple swings, the rubber seats that they sit on, that they have just cut just because. So we are passing this stuff along to the deputy, but just passing this along so you're aware, so you can kind of keep an eye if you're in the area. Courthouse Square Park, you mentioned the lock. I just found out about it. But last week, we had to repaint the women's bathroom because the entire women's bathroom from floor to ceiling and all But last week we had to repaint the women's bathroom because the entire women's bathroom from floor to ceiling and all stalls was vandalized. Spray painted. We were able to get some of it off, but the majority of it was to the point where we had to go in and just paint the bathroom. So. Um. It's starting again. I don't know if it was spring break and just opportunity. I I don't know, but. Um. At the community center, we got, uh, a new vendor to come out. We've been fighting issues with the fire alarm going off randomly and smoke detector issues. They came out, they replaced two smoke detectors, made a repair to the panel that controls the whole fire system over there. Everything is operating as normal, so. We think we finally have that solved, um. Which is amazing because the previous vendor told us it was going to be ten thousand dollars and that was if that would fix the problem. So. Um. I just confirmed today, we have our annual leak detection scheduled for June second through sixth. So you will see during that timeframe, you will see. Public Works and a vendor walking the entire city, uh, with earmuffs and listening devices. To verify leaks on meters, valves, fire hydrants. And then if there's anything in between mainline and, uh, the meter, they will be trying to pinpoint that as well. So. If you're going out in a roadway or anything like that, that's what's going on. Uh, they will be putting blue marks on the ground if they do find something, so. Um, but we can definitely keep you in the loop on that because they, after they do their whole thing, we get a report with all of the concerns or leaks, um, to go and take care of. So. We can definitely loop you in on that if you're interested. And then lastly, um. May is always a super busy month for us. We have, uh, the citywide cleanup, the swap, all, see, go a mile, all of it. I would really like to discuss for a couple of minutes with you guys, the citywide swap that we have over at the community center. In years past, we have put a thirty-yard dumpster over there that has been filled within twelve hours. It has been hauled off and it gets kind of comes back fresh, empty, and it is filled again within twelve hours. We have chased people out of there that are from outside of, not even in this area. Last year, we had people coming in from Oregon City Ingression with box trucks. That were dumping just garbage. Construction material. All of these things, construction material. Last year we had, uh, two fridges, three fifty-five gallon drums. Eight five-gallon buckets of mystery fluid. The fifty-five gallon drones are mystery fluid. We have no idea, um. They were dropped over the community center and just left.
No, but where are they now?
We are still sitting on them because we have to pay hazmat fees to dispose of them because nobody knows what's in these barrels. Uh. Eight-five gallon buckets of mystery fluid, four-one gallon paint cans, seven tires. And not this last year, but the year before, oddly enough, we had an entire twenty-foot fiberglass boat. That was cut up into eight-foot sections and stuffed in a dumpster over there. So. We, my staff spends on average during that week that this is set up, we spend between two and three hours a day over there. Cleaning up. I can't tell you the amount of dirty diapers. DC-covered clothes. Broken glass. You name it, the worst of the worst gets dumped over there because there's nobody there. If you come to the citywide cleanup and you come through and you utilize the dumpsters. City staff is there, recology is there, people are watching, people are saying, no, you cannot dump that. Here's a voucher, you can take it to the landfill. You know, there's, there's things set in place. That whole entire event is a free-for-all. I really, really recommend we sit down and figure out if this is actually worth doing. The amount of stuff, the amount of stuff that we are paying to discard up or potentially coming in contact with. It's mind-blowing.
I say, I mean, that.
Excellent.
Yeah. So devil's advocate, because I think we definitely go around the the room. Um, so we've donated some things to this in the past, and the amount of. You know, folks in the local community do utilize it for the the right reasons is significant, so it is a beneficial resource. The question I would pose is, are there ways in which we can make it so that it's more safe and secure? Oh, uh, could it go into, could, could it be in an indoor location for those couple of days that is then monitored, that is then locked? You know, and you can't take things like a boat cut into three pieces and drop it off there. There's no dumpster, you know. We, whether we have door monitor or what, you know, we can figure that out. But, you know. Is there a middle ground here where maybe it's the community center on the bottom floor? You know, I don't know if that's a good idea. I don't know if that's a bad idea, but maybe it's a bad idea. But is there, is there an opportunity for us to do this in a way that is more controlled and a way that is more safe? It is more fair to your time, quite frankly. If not, I would fully support mixing it, but I would like to see if we can find a middle ground first.
Is there a way to combine the two events? Like roll this into the one where you guys are there already. If somebody wants to bring a couch by, we have something, a section set off, you know, for the quote-unquote swap. And it's like, then you're already there. And if you already have people bringing in paint, you're right, right? Instead of dumping it, you know, we just, we just have both events go off at the same time.
That's a good point. Might only contribute to the security of that space, wouldn't you think?
Well, I mean, when we do the citywide cleanup, it is from what, eight to noon? So, I mean, it's not really a long term, and it's very chaotic.
Yeah.
We have the backhoe that we're running around smashing dumpsters. We've got vehicles coming in. We've got volunteers that are unloading vehicles. So I don't. Space-wise, I don't know where you would be able to do that and have people wandering around swapping stuff. Safe, I guess, would be my concern.
Is this something that we can work in food pantry? I was just going to mention if we can partner up with them somehow.
New brand new building.
Yeah, I mean. I think whatever your thought process is with this event, I see the value of it. But it. We have been, staff has been saying for, I've been here going on four years now, we have been saying the entire time, this needs to be stacked. Yeah. And we don't have the staff to do it. And every time that we're over there, somebody's like, oh, we need volunteers. The volunteers. And so. I don't know how to facilitate it. I I see the value in it, but. We don't have the staff to sit over there eight hours a day to watch what's coming in. And quite frankly, the majority of the stuff that we find the next morning is coming in after we do our four-thirty check as we're leaving for the day.
Yeah.
So.
Councilman Peterson.
I think that, um, well, first off, dangerous things are coming into our town that we certainly don't have the staff to deal with or the expertise. I think we should can't, I think that we should cancel it for this year and just say, due to dangerous things coming into our town that we don't have the staff or the expertise to deal with. We have canceled it for twenty-twenty-five. Sorry, folks. Go to the dump. This year, and then revisit it and try to restart for it and see if we can get a grant and staff it or whatever. But I, this, I mean, this event is coming up in a month for them. We don't, we don't have time to rebuild it.
Yeah.
I think we need to say, no, stop. No one's coming in. We're not doing it. We need to protect you. We need to protect our town and. You know, as as the case, you know, the bad actors are going to mess it up for the good guys.
Yeah. The week after that, still offer the cleanup. So you can still come in and utilize throwing away. The garbage that is allowed to be thrown away at the cleanup.
Yeah.
And it's manned, like I said, and everybody knows what's accepted, what's not accepted. There's signs on the front gate. When you stop in and give your address, they let you know as you come through, hey. Do you have any tires, any batteries, stuff like that, that we let you know right then and there.
Like I said, that the dangerous piece of this should be canceled for this year until we have time to deal with it. And cover our bases to staff it and make it the quality thing for the planet that we want it to be level over there.
Si- uh, since we have that combined with two other things and a lot of marketing materials, we estimate a cost on what. It would cost to reprint a lot of our banners that currently have it on there. Because if I correct me if I'm wrong, but. Though we have our, you know, community wide yard sales, right, that then tie into the free swap, that then tie into the dump. So. I mean, if we're to do, I don't think we should abandon yard sales. I think that's real. I don't think just abandon the dump. So we would then need to reprint for, you know. To prevent confusion, because I do completely agree with the safety component of this. Uh, you know, the mystery fluid and, you know. In the background, we have a pack for one a year, you know, is caused for concern of, uh. Um, and then we reevaluate, you know, next year. But I'm just curious how much cost it would be to, you know, redo our advertising. For these other two events to exclude the thing.
Well, I think basically what the sign is out there and so forth, there's nothing really that has to be.
Right. And if we have to do banners, we started utilizing, um, the school to print them. So it's down significantly to make a lot of raiding things like that.
Yeah.
Well, to be completely transparent here. We have to reach out to recology ahead of time. I've already talked with them to try and get a donation request like we do every year to cut the cost of the dumpsters.
Yeah.
So normally we do one for the cleanup and one for the free swap. We have not reached out yet. We were waiting to have this conversation. I've already reached out, filled out all the paperwork and just waiting for what they're willing to donate for the cleanup. So. We've already started the legwork on continuing that side of things. Uh. And we did kind of let them know that this is what our plan was to talk with you guys to see if you were on board, just so they were aware that we weren't going to be. Asking for more donation on that as well. It means the gentleman I'm speaking with. Thought that that might be able to still roll that dollar amount into this event to help. With the cost of the dumpsters. So we are doing two separate events. It would just be the one, so. But.
Um. Any thoughts, questions, concerns? If you want to make sure that everybody on that answer is up here.
Yeah, I'm going to say maybe we talk of the yard sales in advance a little bit more. Um. But, yeah, take some of this off the city. It seems like we added a whole bunch of stuff out of the city. And it's not working out as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm all for keeping the cleanup. Um, but don't do the rest of that.
Don't put it then.
Yeah. Or maybe it was.
Uh, so since this is council directed, do we need a motion? I mean, obviously it's operations, but. I mean, the the flag for this is going to come down and ask for the decision if there is flag to come down. So I feel like it should be an official, you know, statement from the council. What do we think, City of Detroit?
If you feel like it should be an official statement from the council, I recommend approving a motion to that there.
Thoughts? Proposition? Motion? No movement?
I move to recommend that we drop the pre-swamp part of our cleanup. We keep the spring cleanup, go back to where it was.
Can I add to that, that we will, uh. Continue to search while while this is not happening, we'll continue to search for alternate options to restart it later years.
Oh, yes.
Because that's important.
Yeah.
It's safety, but, you know, it's temporary ideally.
Yeah, second.
I have a motion from Council of Mackin. I have a second from Council of Wyre. Call in favor.
All right.
opposed?
Okay, period. If somebody causes a big stink, it's going to be like, okay, then you're going to be the ones volunteering, you know, twenty-four hour coverage next year. Thank you. Get a committee together. And like we did the fire, just go in. If you want to do the free swap. Get some skin at the end of the day. Don't mess with safety.
Yes. Um, I did have a question. We got a little bit, um, on that one particular topic, but I wanted to go back to the parks as well. Um, and security, see something, say something when it came to water, that's also been tied into the security, which is a really good idea. One of the things that I think has been a boon, um, has been, uh, community security camera participation. So. Like the vehicle the other day that was doing donuts on the Dayton Landing parking lot, right? Um, so that was then pushed out to the community and there was a rally around that. So I wonder if the city pushed for a request for, uh, you know, if you have anything facing these areas, you know. At this time, we we know that there was a ventilation, uh, uh, banned vandalize, you know. X, Y, or Z at this time, you know, if you have cameras facing that property and wouldn't mind sharing them, please let us know. You know, please feel free to work with the city because we want to make sure that our community is safe for everybody and, you know, we need everybody's participation for that safety. So. Is that a good opportunity for us to then rally that, that see something, they say something, that community participation to hopefully try and, in addition to the trail cameras? See if we can identify some of the issues that are going on. What do we think?
I'd like to see that because. We don't have as much money as we need. We need more police protection. We're going to have to step up. Be good neighbors. I'd like to see us do a little bit more about, I don't want to be Big Brother, um, but. We need to look out for each other.
Yeah.
And we need to start promoting that, I think.
That's more operations. I don't think we necessarily make a motion on that, but, um, that could be good, you know, we'll defer to you on that, Jeremy, but. Um, it could be a good, a good reach to maybe get some team participation in security as well. That's all I had. Thank you, Doug. Anything else? Nope, that's it. Good deal. Uh, if you have reports.
We gave you your money.
Okay, thank you very much. I was juggling two meetings tonight, Steve Hopper, excuse me for interrupting.
No problem.
Uh, and the fire department request for one of the hats I wear. Uh, what, did you have any questions about that request?
We, we gave it to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Just like Jim said, though, got to be here to ask for it.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
There was a Bueller.
Bueller, yeah.
I I have to make a comment. I like in the application, the comments on, you know, how do you give back to the community? It was tongue-in-cheek in the right way. But I thought that was funny.
Grandma above the floor. I like that.
Yeah, that.
Oh, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, so informational reports, public library.
So I just have two grant updates for you. Uh, we just completed an Oregon Heritage Grant. Um, the University of Oregon has reels of newspaper images that they store in their archive, and we were able to, um, pay to have some of them digitized through a grant. Um, so there are now eight thousand two hundred fifty-eight pages of the Dayton Herald and Dayton Tribune, ranging from August of eighteen ninety-three through December of nineteen twenty-eight available. Um, you can access them through our website. I'm going to start pushing out some social media about it. But, um. You get to see things like the lead up to the Spanish-American War and and the war itself and the sinking of the Titanic and beginning of, or World War One and. Just all kinds of things and the ads are crazy. If you get a chance to look at it, like, yeah, they're are really something. So that was, that's completed.
Thank you.
Um, and then the second grant, we did get the C L G grant to do the, um. Project to highlight the historic nature of the buildings downtown. As the new businesses and things are going to be opening, you know, the buildings look new, they're refreshed and everything, but we want to emphasize that they are historic structures. That the park has historic structures, Alacrity is on the National Register, Duquesne Building is on the National Register, the bypass building. Uh, Lone Star, they're all, you know, historic buildings. So that's where we're going to start with that grant. So it's going to be a mobile inter, um, a mobile interface that you can get with your phone. We'll have like some Q R codes, but nice. Like, um, plastic ones produced for to put in the store windows and things. Um, so the people can go around, scan the code and you can see what it looked like back in the day compared to what it looks like now. So it should be a pretty cool experience for people.
That's right. How much is the grant setting?
Uh, so the grant is funding ten thousand eight hundred ninety dollars of the activity and then we're going to match with seventy-six hundred dollars, but that's basically staff time and. In-kind donations of like, um, the community service for, um, a cemetery tour event that's going to be happening in October and things like that.
Cool. Thank you. Well, thank you, Cindy. That's really cool of you to make it, yeah. Uh, anything else for the public library?
Uh, we got some reading coming out.
Lovely.
Angel?
No, not Angel. I have two or five other perform. We have, um, the Amazing Bubble Man coming, Mo Phillips, which is a musical artist. Habiba's Village, which is music and dance. Uh, we have the Museum of Natural Cultural History coming out and the Oregon Coast Aquarium.
Okay, just confirming, doesn't go out on social media. Okay, just confirming, those will go on on social media as well.
Absolutely.
Perfect, good deal, um, anything else?
That's it.
See, manager, bring us home.
Alright, this month, I need to focus on preparing my recommended budget, that is. Top priority this month. At the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Government's annual dinner and awards on March fifth. Dayton received a regional cooperative project award, that award is in your packet. This is for the urban forum project, I have a link to that. In my report, I urge you all to check it out, it's very slick. In that report, you can look in Yamhill County, click on any parcel of property, it'll generate a detailed report. On all the zoning development stuff, you need to know about that, save a lot of time for me and other staff. A lot of time for developers, uh, it's a really slick project, this was, this all happened before I came on board. Dave was a part of it, my predecessor was a part of it, all of the cities and organizations on here were a part of it, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. We held an open house on March sixth for the transportation system plan, the next step. In that process is holding an event with the school district to allow the students an opportunity. Provide their input into that process. The COG convened a meeting of Yamhill County County, Yamhill County Cities and McMinnville Water and Light. Purpose of that meeting was to discuss regional solutions to our water supply challenges. COG submitted a grant request on behalf of all the cities to do a regional planning effort, so that would develop. Preliminary engineering plans of a regional system, as well as recommendations for a regional governance structure. I provided a support letter on behalf of the city for that project. If the COG receives that grant, they would be the lead agency, there would be no cost to us and other cities. Except for our staff time to participate. On March thirteenth, Mayor Frank, the council president, public works supervisor, city engineer and I. Made a presentation before the Lafayette City Council for the interim measure to use their Astro transmission line. They authorized staff to continue negotiations with us and McMinnville Water and Light on that issue. And on that note, the public works supervisor and city engineer and I met with representatives from Mac Water and Light. This also included the city of Lafayette team, the purpose of that meeting was to discuss the logistics of this proposal. We would have to have a, an intergovernmental agreement with McMinnville Water and Light. Lafayette would have to amend their IGA with McMinnville Water and Light, and we would have to update our IGA with Lafayette. So there's a lot of contractual stuff that would have to happen to make this work, but. My sense after that meeting is that things are, are moving in the right direction on this, and of course, I will keep you updated every step of the way on this process. To follow up from the planning session that you had on March twenty-eighth, Jensen Strategies is preparing a final draft of that. I will bring that to you at a future meeting for your approval. As Council McGuire noted. Representative Scharf submitted, or, or was successful in submitting our one point nine million dollar funding request. That was one of the projects that she selected from her district, as the Senator Starr mentioned. Uh, they coordinate the senators and the representatives for their districts, and he also went, uh, put his support in for that. Council McGuire, of course, will speak testify on behalf of the city later this month. I've asked a CPA firm out of Portland to come and work. For a limited time on some accounting tasks to help us get caught up, they've been start, they had started in March twenty-fourth, making good progress. We have an extension to our audit deadline through May thirty-first. I asked the city engineer to prepare, provide memos to you, updating you on the utility bridge project and pump station, that mem, those memos. Are following my reports for your information, what questions do you have for me?
In past communications with regard to, uh, the Lafayette, um, and Mac Water and Light, I am. Um, you had mentioned some significant costs that might be incurred for the city. Do we have any other information on that? Um, something with regard to. Lafayette wanting some credits or something with respect to not using water or something like that. I apologize, this, I didn't really prepare for this question very well.
Some of the, all, all of that's open to negotiation, and ultimately, that'll come before you most likely at executive session.
I will entertain a motion, Peter. We are ending the, uh, the meeting at eight thirty-four P M.